Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the park. Uh, it's Tuesday, September the 5th, 2023, and I will call this meeting to order. We're gonna start. We have an indication from Bishop Dorothy Sharad of the Lilly of the Valley Church. Thank you, Bishop, for coming out on this lovely evening.
You're welcome. Gracious Heavenly Fathers, in the name of Jesus that we come today to say thank you for this day and for this opportunity that we are allowed to come together for this council meeting. We thank you for blessing and keeping us safe throughout this summer. As I heard the report on yesterday and today that there have been no drownings here, we're so grateful for lives that are spared and for families that have been able to come together and to enjoy this beautiful summer. We pray that you will continue to bless the leadership of our council, that you will continue to bless our men and women in law enforcement that provide protection for us here in the city. We're so grateful and we're so thankful that you have averted disasters that could have happened here and you've kept us safe. We thank you. We give you glory. We praise you, Lord, because we realize that it's only because of you, and that's why we come tonight, to acknowledge you. And we ask that you will continue to bless this council, that you will give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that as we continue to move forward, that we will be able to work together for the betterment of this entire city, and that you will be honored as we work together, that we will show respect and honor one to another, even though we might not agree on everything, but help us to be able to agree to disagree and yet have the love for one another. Because this is what unifies and this is what makes our community what it is. Bless our children in school, keep them safe, and continue to watch over us as we continue to do the work that you've given us to do. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop. And now, if you'll join for the Pledge of Allegiance, you have to get a little creative. There's a few flags out in the marina, just until you find one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands the nation under God, with all liberty and freedom.
Good work. All right, roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion second to approve the agenda. Questions? Comments? None? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, it is approved. Next, we're at time for public comment for items that are on the agenda. Um, so if there's any items that are on the agenda, um, come on up, state your name and address. You'll have up to five minutes. We're happy to take your comments. There's no public hearing, so just be an item on the agenda. And good evening.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me okay?
We are great, thank you.
Uh, Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Just curious if you received the email I sent this afternoon. Sorry for the late reply, but when something's added on Friday of a holiday weekend, it just kind of takes time to get to it. In reviewing the item of Agenda Item 10, I had a few questions, and this didn't seem like time was of the essence. And so if the issues, um, or the questions that I had raised could, cannot be answered, I noticed that, um, Township Supervisor, the Chair, Shar is here. If they cannot be answered, possibly this could be adjourned, just because we want to make sure that Shar is properly funded, expenses are covered, and we don't have to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else? Any, and this is right, I'm on the agenda.
Hi, everybody. My name is Scott Reinert, uh, 543 Quaker Street here in South Haven. I served as the Executive Director of the Visitors Bureau here in town for about five and a half years, starting in 2016. Um, back in that year, myself and the board, we recognized the importance of recreation and trails, uh, for the community, not only in terms of guests, but also our residents as well. So we spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of personal time, uh, devoted to the promotion of trails and recreation in, um, in our community. Um, projects that we've done include the Sesquicentennial Trail that you see right there, uh, we installed that, um, the bike racks you see around town, the rework of all the Harbor, uh, Harbor Walk signage and all the Trail Town signage. I personally wrote the application for South Haven to be named one of the first four Trail Towns in the state of Michigan, and so we were awarded that designation. But we also recognize the importance, uh, of other initiatives, uh, around the community. And at that time, I learned of Shar's efforts and, uh, reached out to, uh, Ross and the Shar Board and talked to them about the CDB becoming a member, which we did. Uh, so basically, the CDB is a full member of Shar along with the City of South Haven, South Haven Township, and the, uh, South Haven Public Schools. Uh, you see from the, from the numbers there, uh, Shar doesn't have any money. You know, $20,000 is not, not a lot of money to get a lot of things done. So we, um, have worked with Shar to get a number of things done. Shar is the evolution of the Shark Park that you may recom, uh, recognize from 10 or 12 years ago. Um, you know, what they've accomplished, in my mind, is amazing. Uh, the CDB has donated really time and effort on three specific projects with Shar. The Disc Golf Park that we installed, uh, on 14th Avenue, the new kayak launch that we've actually started construction on right now, uh, that'll be opened up in the spring. And, uh, we have a potential, we have a grant application in for the development of, uh, what we're calling Phase One of the Porter Property, Porter Dune Property, uh, adjacent to Pilgrim Haven. Uh, the CDB alone has, uh, committed over, uh, $250,000 to those three projects alone. Um, the amount of grants that Shar has received, um, and, and contributions, you know, close to $6 million, which is amazing, on a $20,000 budget. So I'm so strongly in support of Shar and their efforts and what they've done. Uh, the actual three original soccer fields from the Shark Park are being built as we speak, if you've been down there. So that vision has come to fruition as well due to Shar's efforts. So, um, what they're asking for tonight basically covers expenses. Uh, in my mind, it needs to be a lot more. It needs to be a millage, and, uh, that's something that I personally am passionate about. Uh, if we are going to do what other communities do, which is make recreation a priority, we've got to invest in, in, uh, in our recreation and trails. And, um, so anyway, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. Was there anybody else? One's going twice. Sold. All right. That takes us to the Consent Agenda, Items A through C.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, Items A through C.
Second. We have a motion second, uh, questions, comments? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yep.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, it's approved. New business. City Council will be asked to consider the approval of a special event, Application 2023-39, Touch a Truck, to be held on September the 27th from 3:30 PM until 6:30 PM at the Huron Street Pavilion.
I make a motion to approve Special Event Application 2023-39, Touch a Truck, event to be held on September 27th.
Second.
All right, motion second. Kate, whose, whose truck are we touching?
We're gonna be talking, touching as many trucks as we can, sir. Uh, so this will be, uh, the City of South Haven's event. Uh, the Social Activities Committee has put together a Touch a Truck event, uh, to be held at the date and time talked about at the Huron Street Pavilion. We'd like to bring the city's police officers, the, the Public Works Department and their various trucks, as well as the South Haven Area Emergency Services, and get them all together, bring people down, large and small, to get to know us, know what we do, and go ahead and look at all of our fun trucks and toys. Um, this is again what part of our Community Cohesiveness Initiative, and this is another event. We liked what we saw with National Night Out and kind of wanted to expand on that, and this is where the Touch a Truck, um, kind of came from. Additionally, this is an, uh, an event that's going around in other communities, so it's a good way to get out and meet your community. So additionally, um, the city clerk will be having a booth there, so if anyone wants to register to vote or get to know anything that she does, we'll be having a number of, um, items out there. We are looking to provide hot dogs, games, and booths, and learning about various city departments.
I like it. And Brandon's here. There, there, the trucks are always so clean and shiny, they're allowed to touch them, it's okay? All right, I gotta ask.
It'll all buff out.
All right. All right, very good. Questions? Comments? I think it's a great idea. I like it.
There's not an age maximum, right?
There is not.
You can climb in.
That's right.
Anybody else?
I just think it sounds like a lot of fun, and I love seeing these community events, so I'm happy and excited to bring my kids down.
Very good. Thank you.
Agreed. Young and old alike, come down, so. All right, there's nothing else. We have a motion and a second to approve Special Event 2023-39, Touch a Truck. Uh, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, it is approved. See everybody there. Next, City Council's gonna receive an update from South Haven Area Emergency Services Director, Mr. Brandon Hens. Speaking of clean fire trucks, good evening, Brandon.
Good evening. Good evening, members of City Council. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to let me come down and brag on our department a little bit, and I wanted to thank City Manager Hosier for the invitation, uh, to come on down for the evening. Keeping our community informed and singing the praises of our Class A membership is, are two of the highlights of my job. I brought an outline to keep myself on track, so I don't keep you here all night. If left unrestricted, I will, guarantee you. There's a reason for that. I'm extremely proud of this department. I'm extremely proud of what we do and how we do it. As you all know, we not only provide fire protection, but we also provide ALS, Advanced Life Support EMS Transport. Many communities have an EMS service aside from a fire department. Shays has all that wrapped up into one. We serve a total of 97 square miles with a five and a half minute average response time, three and a half average minute response time in South Haven City. Year-to-date, as a service, we've responded to 1,853 calls. Total incidents in South Haven City were 778. Total EMS incidents in South Haven City were 601. Total fire incidents is 177. And as it has mentioned before in, in previous, uh, council meetings, the fire numbers don't, we haven't responded to 177 structured fires in the city, thankfully. Those numbers encompass a bunch of different, uh, categories. Gas leaks, carbon monoxide alarms, carbon monoxide checks, uh, lift assists for elderly residents, structure fires, grass fires, vehicle fires. And there's a reason we don't respond to that many fires anymore in the city or any of our townships, is because of the increased emphasis on building, uh, building code construction, site plans, pre-plans, inspections. Our deputy chief and inspectors have been doing an excellent job at their job, and I think it really shows. Jumped ahead on my outline. Because, of course, the best way to fire, fight a fire is through prevention, and that's what we like to, we prefer to do that rather than respond with our big shiny trucks. We've had our challenges these last couple of years, upholding these times and services. We've had an increased call volume of up to 6% just this year-to-date, 42% increase over the last 10 years. Increased EMS transports to larger regional, uh, hospitals due to less medical services provided in town. Longer transports, an average of one per 24-hour shift, take a unit out of service for at least three to four hours. Our minimum staffing is two. We've had many discussions at our Authority Board meetings this past year, and our board has decided we are in need of more personnel. And we're taking steps to increase staffing, to ensure we have an ambulance on the way for the next call and a fire engine on the way for the next call. We've noticed over the past two years as well, the amount of what we refer to as double taps is increasing with call volume increase, but also with our extended longer spans that our ambulances aren't in service. A double tap is the instance where we respond to two incidents at once. Uh, and then, once we do that, we have to call back off-duty members to cover the station for the next call that will be coming. A recent study showed 23% of our incidents are double. Um, we've had incidents this past year, uh, this past summer where we've had as many as six within 58 minutes, which was through some creative staffing and our members pulling together, we were able to cover them all. Um, and I have to give a lot of credit to Covert Fire and EMS for having our backs too. They are our backup ALS transport service, and we are their backup. To determine ideal staffing levels, I compiled statistics of incidents totals per person per year from 20 other Michigan fire departments. I was astonished to see, but not too surprised to see, that, uh, out of all those, out of those 20 Michigan fire departments, our membership was the second busiest per shift in the group. That's, there again, I, I can't say enough about the dedication of our full-time staff and our paid-on-call staff that come together when we need some help. As most of you know, our authority is funded by multiple sources. Our three big revenue sources are property taxes, Van Buren County tax, Van Buren County ambulance millage, and ambulance billings. Distributions to the city and townships are based upon taxable values and population. Collected ambulance billings have actually decreased over the last 10 years. Increased operating costs coupled with poor Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements, which are 60% of our EMS transports, uh, result in a net revenue that it's actually $20 less per call than it was in 2013, which is crazy, uh, considering how costs have all went up. Poor reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid requires us to lean on our taxpayers a little bit harder to provide the service that we do. I've contacted our state and US representatives regarding this issue and am continuing to do so, attempting to push for a change and hopefully some improvements that will benefit Shays, of course, but also other EMS agencies around the nation. Shays 2023 budget is $3.4 million. After revenues from ambulance billings are considered and revenues from the Van Buren County ambulance tax is considered, we have about $2 million left to distribute amongst the entities that we serve. South Haven City's portion of this bill is $734,000. This provides South Haven City with 15 firefighter career, 15 career firefighter paramedics, two career firefighter EMT basic inspectors, 30 paid-on-call firefighters, 17 apparatus, three stations. The budgeted amount for South Haven Fire Department in 1995 was $350,000 more than South Haven City currently contributes to Shays annually. Those that formed this authority in 1996 sort of thanks for these savings and an increase in service. That not only benefits South Haven City, but also benefits the other townships that we cover. South Haven City, South Haven Township, Casco Township, and Geneva Township all have three stations and 17 career members and 17 pieces of their apparatus and 30 paid-on-call We are currently slightly under budget and barring any huge equipment repairs, hopefully we stay that way. We did have some tower issues today, so hopefully they're not too costly. We've had retirees and resignees this past year. Dawn Hens retired after 15 years with Shays. She was replaced with firefighter, uh, paramedic Cory Capell from the Hamilton area. Amanda Quinn followed her dream of being a flight medic with Air Care. I thought this was a pretty cool gig, but I guess flying around in a helicopter is cooler, so. Um, William Cooper, firefighter, paramedic William Cooper filled the vacancy for her position. Dawn and Amanda still remain as paid-on-call members of our department, and William and Cory have been excellent additions. We're very grateful to have them. We welcome back two paid-on-call members, Will Wright and Andrew Gosman, had to step away, uh, for a couple of years, but they came back swinging. Uh, we've also added two, two new paid-on-call members, Dawn and Lily Nyhoff, Dalton Wolfe, Brandon Brown, and Shelby Forker. Shays has applied for two large grants for the second year in a row. Fiuma opens grant cycles for fire departments in need of equipment and staffing, and, um, we've applied for both. With increased equipment costs and our need for additional career members, uh, the narratives for these grants, I really expressed that we are truly in need. Uh, with apparatus costs over the last two years just increasing 30 to 50%, and on a $500,000 engine that we had in our capital replacement plan for, for 350, three years ago, it kind of starts to add up, so. And I also expressed that we have been extremely responsible. We have a dedicated capital replacement plan. Time will tell, but I think we sold it pretty well. Both of our annual pancake breakfasts went extremely well, our Memorial Day and Labor Day Pancake Breakfast. Uh, we net $3,600 off of our, uh, Labor Day Pancake Breakfast, which was excellent. Um, we're always astounded by the outpouring of support we get from our community. I see a lot of faces here, uh, and behind me that we're at, that are, we're at this last one and are often at our other ones as well. Uh, along with our fundraisers, we also received donations from the public, local businesses, local organizations. As responsible as we are, the budget does get a little tight by the end of the year, and some things that we wouldn't necessarily prioritize, uh, become backburner items, these donations help to purchase. Uh, for instance, we just received, uh, we just purchased $20,000 worth of rope rescue equipment through some grants through local businesses and organizations this past year. Equipment that we didn't prioritize, everything we had was in good shape, little bit basic, but it worked well. But we also realized it was 15, 15 years past its server, service date, so that was something that we were very fortunate and grateful to have. Shays Fire, uh, Shays Annual Award Dinner produced another firefighter of the year and Leadership Award winner. Fighter Fighter of the Year in 2023 was Zach Kenrich. Uh, he's one of our career members, is a huge asset to the organization and a huge asset to our community. Our 2023 Leadership Award winner was Philip Quinn. He's a paid-on-call member that juggles full-time employment and, uh, always comes when he's called. 2023's been good. It's been challenging at times, but it's been good. Good because I have a great po, great group of people to work with, and, uh, we have a really good community to serve, so. We do have some community events coming up, uh, late September, thankfully it got passed. Um, the Touch a Truck event, uh, 20, September 27th, uh, we were invited to attend. Our Fire Safety Fund Fair is October 12th at the fire station, like we've had for the past, I just want to say 22 years running. And, uh, we have a couple of fun events, uh, that we've collaborated, or the South Haven Visitors Bureau, uh, we're working with, as well as, um, we've also teamed up with the Red Cross to install smoke detectors in the home of our elderly residents in need. So we're gonna hit 2024 running. Uh, we don't really have a break anymore, so we have to hit it running. But, uh, this next year, we're hoping to add a couple more staff members to ensure that we do have somebody coming in case somebody needs a lend a hand, in case somebody needs a hand. Resume our increased recruiting efforts in our schools and neighborhoods. I have a list a lot longer than this, but, uh, I know I'm running short on time. But, uh, thank you all again for giving me the opportunity to come down and give you an update. I'm extremely grateful for this every time, and, um, extremely proud of our department, our team, and, uh, very humbled to be the spokesperson for this group of people that really make a shine, so. Can I answer any questions?
I'll just say, you do have a great group of people. They've got a great leader that keeps all that going, so we're extremely proud of you, and I am thankful every day that you're all getting up, suiting up, and keeping us safe, so. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, man. All right, next, City Council's gonna be asked to consider a request to increase the annual funding from the, uh, South Haven Area Recreation Authority.
I'll make a motion to consider the request to increase the annual funding to the South Haven Area Recreational Authority.
A second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Kate, intro.
Yes, please.
A lot of cast of characters coming up, I like it, so.
We do have a number of people here from the Shar Board. I see Supervisor Stein, um, city resident and appointee Brian Desette. I see Marine Lewandowski, uh, Township President and Township trustee, and Jen Sistrunk, who's also a member of the Shar Board. Uh, this is the South Haven Area Recreation Authority is coming to this board to increase their per capita, uh, contribution from the city. Um, that's about $8,000, a little less than, as our population has dropped, that they get. Um, just to go over roughly is they get $2, the Shar gets $2 per capita, also from the township, that is their contribution, so that's roughly about $16,000 in addition to $5,000. So that's roughly about $16,000 in addition to $5,000 annually that the CVB contributes. The annual expenditures for the audit, the insurance, legal and professional fees, bank fees, and bathroom cleanings are well over $22,000, which exceeds about the $21,000 that this authority receives. So SHARA is coming to you today to request an increase in their per capita and explain why that request is being made.
Sounds good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, whoever wants to come up, just come on up, state your name, address, tell us a little bit about it, and, and thank you for being here. Ross and Brian.
I'm Ross Stein. I'm the Township Supervisor. I know many of you, we've been together at housing workshops, so.
Microphone, please.
Most of the time my mouth's big enough, nobody has problems hearing. When the SHARA started about 10 years ago, both municipalities contributed $2 per capita. So our funding was almost the exact money 10 years ago as it is today from the government agencies. The only difference is since then, we have added the Visitors Bureau. The Visitors Bureau is contributing about $5,000 to SHARA. When we initially started, the only thing we had was insurance and audit, so we were covering our expenses then. Now we've added the Pilgrim Haven site, the, it should be more than just cleaning, it's up Pilgrim Haven management because we also have electric there. We have work on the gate there, it's an electronic gate that takes repair on it. The grounds need repair, it's just, it's more than just bathroom cleaning for that issue. So those are, as Kate said, exceeding our income. I think everybody has a copy of what was given, what SHARA's done in the past and will be done. We've done a lot on very little money. We got the, the biggest, I think, gold mine we got is the Porter property, valued at $3 million, and that cost us locally nothing. The, we got a state grant for that for $2.25 million. The Land Trust donated a significant amount of money and the owner donated some of the money towards that also. So we got that for basically nothing. What we've got for Pilgrim, and that's about 47 acres and 400 feet on Lake Michigan. The Porter, the Pilgrim Haven property that we are dealing with, with the Land Conservancy, is 27 acres, about 700 feet on Lake Michigan. We got the trust fund grant for that. The local match for that came from South Haven Township. South Haven Township paid about approximately $88,000 for that local match. Back to the Porter property, there are two homes on there, the DNR says those must be removed. The quote on that was approximately $16,500. South Haven Township paid that money to get those removed. As we move forward, we got the first phase development at Pilgrim Haven. There was another phase development at Pilgrim Haven. Something else on the management for Pilgrim Haven, that's a vaulted toilet. That vaulted toilet needs to be pumped out, so it's not just all cleaning. That's the passive recreation side of things. The more aggressive or youth organization side of it is, I'm very appreciative to the Sharp Organization, that was the South Haven Area.
Recreation Project.
Recreation Park. They had plots, 96 acres in Casco. Mr. Desette and somebody else went to one of their planning commission meetings, it was very evident that it wasn't going to be welcomed there from the government side of things and the neighbors. So we sold that piece of property, the Lappel property was up for sale. We took the proceeds from that property, we used 100, approximately $100,000 of that, we got $300,000 from the state to develop that piece of property. It took us three years to get a grant application approved, but that's what's going with those soccer fields there, was $300,000 from the state and the balance of the proceeds from the sale of the other property to get that going. In the meantime, Scott back there, and I'm surprised he didn't put the plug in for it, he and a gentleman by the name of Chuck Moore developed the disc golf on that property. So again, there's recreational activities out there going on that didn't cost the community a penny. They cleared it all, one of the, a local person used his Bobcat, cleared it. They worked hard and diligently to get it going. There's some donations there from other individuals that bought.
They bought the.
Yeah, the disc nets.
The basket sponsorships. There's also a bicycle rack at that location. So we have been very fortunate to get a lot for very little local income on it. Mr. Desette and I have been working with some of the local youth recreation groups, the AYSO, the JYL, the Rocket Football, they're all struggling. They can't keep the volunteers going, it's expensive. We're talking with them and the school to see what we can do to keep that going, because if there's no feeder programs, it's going to be devastating for the high schools. If you don't have the feeder program going on, you're not going to have the athletics. Hopefully, everybody here knows that there's high school athletes leaving South Haven to go to other schools because they're dissatisfied with what they're getting for the level of athletic activity here. We need to build that program. I had Kate pass out to you the front page of the Michigan Township Association's most recent magazine. Michigan Township Association is similar to the Michigan Municipal League, and the front page right there says recreation. Yeah, recreation, outdoor recreation fosters quality of life, economic development. It's going to help the quality of life and it's going to help the economic development of the community. That's going to go beyond the raids that we're asking for today. South Haven Township has a quarter mill for recreation. I would like the city to consider adding a quarter mill on so they can power that with the township. If we're going to be responsible for helping with the youth athletics there, we're going to need that additional money to help manage those programs. Between the two municipalities, I believe for the city it'd be about $125,000. For the township, it's about $45,000. With that money, we could help get the programs going, and you need a minimum 25% match to get a state grant program. So we could continually apply for $3,000 from the state to get these fields going. That's what it's going to take to build the soccer fields. We've already spoken to Rotary, it's a, it's a time to get through their program, but hopefully they're going to get a grant there to help build the concession stand. So we're excited about what's going on there. So that's my spiel. I'll let some of the others say something, and then you can ask us questions.
Thanks, Ross. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello. I wasn't prepared to speak. I was here hoping that my colleagues would be ready, so I just kind of wanted to share the CVB's role. I think Scott kind of summarized a lot of the good work that we've done in the past, so I'd just like to share kind of what our initiatives from the Convention and Visitors' Bureau's role is moving forward. Ross mentioned that we have committed $5,000 every year, and this year our board decided to double that, and so we are committed to $10,000 every year because we understand the importance of this and how this is going to help not only our visitors but our residents as well. And speaking to the kayak launch, I believe somebody mentioned that on Phoenix Road, so we plan on, so the CVB, build background on that, the CVB purchased that property in 2019 with the intent of putting in a fully accessible kayak launch. And so we gifted that property to SHARA, and so we were able to attain a grant for that. And the CVB matched those grant funds in the total of 100, I'm sorry, $98,000. And so that was, that was how we got that done. So when Ross talks about how, you know, the residents are not paying for this, you know, that's just a testament to what the work that SHARA, SHARA has done. And so, you know, we really feel passionately about this 14th Avenue process. It's been a long time coming, you know, the residents have been passionate about it. There's been a lot of fundraising that's been going on for it, and we just want to see that come to fruition. And I think, you know, and it really just comes down to money, you know, we just, we just don't have the money. And so I think, you know, this might be a small step, but I think it's a step, and we could really use the support. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is behind everything that's happening out there. Again, you know, Scott put his blood, sweat, and tears of former director before me, he's, you know, as I stand up here in front of this podium and say that we're, you know, we're ready to do this, but Scott really genuinely put his blood, sweat, and tears into that. And I just think that all of us, I don't want to speak for the whole board here, but all of us feel very passionately about this project, very passionately about the properties that we maintain, and we just hope that, you know, the community can stand behind us. We think that it's not too much to ask, but we, we just hope that you'll, you'll join us in this effort because we're, we're really ready to go after all the state funding, the federal funding, all that sort of thing, so we just hope that you guys are here with us.
Thanks, Jennifer. Free runway. Would you state your name and your title so we know who you are?
Oh, sorry. So I'm Jennifer Sistrunk. I am in the township, actually, but I'm also the Director of the South Haven Van Buren County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you.
Of course.
And thanks for speaking. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Maureen Lewandowski. I'm a trustee in the township, that's where I live. And I like beaches, so very, the money that is given to SHARA has helped develop Deerlik and Pilgrim Haven. People come from all over to, especially to Pilgrim Haven and Deerlik because it's mentioned as the seventh best rock collecting site all around Lake Michigan, and especially with the lightning stones. So it brings in money, brings people, people's money. But we need to keep, actually, I have a few people that return every year that bring a grocery bag, and part of their duty when they visit the beach is to collect a grocery bag of trash, which they willingly do, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. My name's Brian Desette, 401 Pearl Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all. And just, we're going to jump in the other wayback machine. So the summer of 2008, this property was highly contentious. Where you're sitting now, the Johnston family had come forward, so this would be the heirs to Stanley Johnston. They wanted to build what you are sitting at. It was an incredibly difficult process of working with the family, working through our Parks Commission, then ultimately getting it across the finish line. It was the better part of a year. And it was not an easy process, and at times Mr. Johnson, Johnston may have yelled at staff and had other things to say. But we got it done, and it was through cooperation and creativity. And as you sit here today, it's million-dollar views, and the investment they made has paid off so many times over. And I'm thrilled that you're out here and I'm thrilled that you're using this space. I tie that to the analogy of SHARA. There is no limit on how high you could, you commit funds and not see an immediate payoff. The recreation fields that are under construction now, Compton is out there, they're building them. It is through the hard work of Dana Getman, Susie Fitzgibbon, Dennis Fitzgibbon, Mark McLendon, and on and on and on, and it goes back nearly 20 years. And the Fitzgibbons talked about it, and Mark McLendon talked about trying to get the fields, yeah, fields ready in time for their kids to play on them. Those kids now are parents and have teenagers. We need to do this, we need to get it done. I've talked with some of you about my personal situation. I, I weep at the thought of kids leaving this town, and it just kills me that kids that have played in my backyard for years have left. We have an opportunity to stop the bleed, invest in recreation, invest in your parks, and you are going to see true commitment to economic development. What you're being asked today is a drop in the bucket. It's an increase on the, the per capita funding, and it's a relatively small, and the overall budget impact on the city is relatively small. As Ross noted, on a going-forward basis, we hope to be much more bold. We hope to bring back something that hasn't been here for decades now, and that's community recreation. Now, that's a ballot question, and that's going to be up to about 4,000 people to consider, and I would ask for tonight, don't confuse the issues. Today is about keeping the lights on at SHARA. Tomorrow is about the bigger picture. Now with that, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thanks to the Johnston family for making this space a reality. Thank you for sure.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. All right, that's from the council. Questions, comments?
I've got a couple. So first I want to say I really support SHARA. It's a great organization, especially like how SHARA has partnered with other organizations to leverage obtaining external resources to help fund projects. And when we talk about opportunities that help encourage families to move to this area, I think SHARA is, as Mr. Desette pointed out, is a great example on how that will work. I know the motion didn't seem to have a number as far as what we were going to try to add. Do we have an idea of what the, what the number is we're looking at? And can, and when this would take effect, and can we factor this into the budget? I know we're, we're not even halfway through the fiscal year, but can we factor this into the budget-making process for the next budget process so we can make sure that it gets properly included in the budget for next year?
Yes, George. I believe the request that I heard from Chairman Stein is to increase our per capita from $2 to $4. And from what I understand, Mr. Stein would be matching that at the township. So this would be an increase from $2 to $4. My understanding, and Ross can make this, can confirm this, they would be asking for a disbursement by the end of the year because this is at the end of SHARA's fiscal year, and then going, on a going-forward basis, starting in January.
And do we have the money in the budget to do this for this, this fiscal year?
We do, we do. While this is not budgeted per se, we can adjust this with a budget amendment before the end of the fiscal year. And moreover, we're talking about an additional $16,000 for this, for this fiscal year and then going forward.
One, one last question. Is there any possibility of getting more pickleball courts in the 14th Street?
Well, the good thing is, is that we do have a model, I'm sorry, SHARA does have a model plan, and pickleball is factored in there, and that has been communicated, and we'd like to share that, and we have shared that with them. And not to speak for them, because I'm really just the typist when we go to the meetings, but I can, I can say that with some confidence, is that they have been baked into that plan.
Thank you.
If you look at the map, you'll see where there is a location on there. They came to a SHARA meeting. Unlike youth that don't have money to put money towards their athletic endeavors, pickleball people do. And for them to come up with a match, so we could go after a $400,000 grant, that'd be $300,000, they'd have to come up with $100,000. They talk about 200 people in their group or more than that. It'd be pretty cheap for them to come up with a local match themselves.
Very good. Anybody else? Questions, comments? I, I will be supportive. My only favor, as many of you know, would be to, I know, the school's our board member. I'm a firm believer that we need to have a plan to maintain facilities that have already been built, that we as a community have invested in, AKA the soccer fields that are already built off airworth. I know there was discussion with Mr. Schooly mowing in water, but again, I just, I'm all good to invest in more, let's just maintain what we have before we move on to the next project. That's, but I will support. Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, a lot of times I've heard residents talk about quality of life. I can't think of anything that adds to the quality of life more than recreation. We talk about our lake and how much we love it, but we have trails, we have soccer ball courts. And I'm with Brian, to lose one child in school because they don't feel they have the equipment and the facilities here is not good. And I will compliment the township for coming up with so much funds. I think it's very fair for us to come up with a $2, $2 extra per capita. It's amazing what all of you have done already with so little funds and had so much done in this community, so I compliment you, and I couldn't support you more.
All right, very good. If there's no other comments, we've got a motion, we've got a second, the plane fly over. Motion second to increase the funding for the South Haven Area Recreational Authority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you. Next, city council will be asked to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers for a term of 30 years. the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers for a term of three years.
I make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers for a term of three years.
Second. Motion and a second. Very good. And Kate?
Well, thank you, Mayor. The IBEW bargaining unit, which is basically our public works plus some customer service representatives, their collective bargaining agreement expired June 30th of this year. We have worked on a proposed collective bargaining agreement, which was ratified by the union. So we have put this to the City Council to ratify on our end. There are a number of changes here. The, couple of the changes are, instead of a four-year agreement, this will be a three-year agreement. We have agreed upon some pay increases for, of 3.5% for the next three years. Starting in next year, IBEW union members will contribute an additional 0.5% to their pension, bringing their contribution to 8.5. And then beginning July 1, 2025, IBEW union members will contribute an additional 0.5% to their pension, bringing their employee contributions to 9%. Working for persons will, will receive an additional $1 an hour, so making it $2 an hour. We've reduced the probationary period. We have highlighted employees with more than 20 years of service to, to receive an additional five days of vacation time. And in a number of other issues, or no, I'm sorry, a number of other conditions to be added, including a clawback provision that will require employees in an apprentice, I'm sorry, apprenticeship program to pay back a percentage of the cost of their apprenticeship if they leave within four years. That's going to help us with retention, I'm sorry, investing in our, in our, in our employees who are looking to better themselves or get some, some education there. The IBEW unit includes about 28 full-time public work employees, and the estimated cost for this three-year agreement is over $10 million. And the allocation in the general fund has been broken down on page 47 of your packet.
Okay. We've all got the packet. So questions, comments from this group? I'd say very important workers and important that we get this ratified.
We wouldn't be us without them, I can tell you that.
Exactly. Very extremely important workers here. So there's no other questions, comments? I've got a motion and a second to approve the collective bargaining agreement as you have before you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most no. It's approved. Very good. Thanks, everybody. Next, we're going to receive an update from our Public Works Director, Mr. Bill Hunter. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. Following your updates actually on projects going on within the Department of Public Works. The new substation project, it's all built. We're just waiting actually to energize it. We do have some distribution lines that need to be built. So once this gets charged, as I stated before, it can't be energized until September 19. And that's actually due to paperwork required that was filled out by AEP that gets submitted actually to PJM, which is the regional transmission organization that we're a member of, or that we receive our power from. So once we do that, again, those distribution lines get run, and then the, should be fully operational by probably the spring, late spring of next year. AMI project, we're still waiting on meters. It's been supply chain issues across the board, and we're getting more of them in, but not to where we can actually start the project. I told the contractor that I didn't want it done until we could get it all done at one time. I didn't want them to be mobilized. So this hit, and so we're going to, it's going to be the spring of actually 2024. Cost of service study, we're waiting for that, for the draft copy from UFS. They did the cost of service studies for the water and sewer as well. Once we get that, we'll present it actually to the Board of Public Utilities, and then I'll go in front of City Council. Solar development project, been working with MPPA and a developer that has a potential solar generation project within the township area. Good news about that that just recently came to light. This developer was submitting actually for a grant from the USDA, and USDA has informed this developer that they can submit an application. Yeah, you just can't just submit them. They actually want you to apply to see if you qualify to submit. So this is very good news. We're, we're moving, moving forward. So with that, actually, it's going to require about 60 days of due diligence. So we're hoping to get a draft purchase power agreement in front of the BPU to review, and then that'll go in front of City Council. But we're finger, we're crossing our fingers. This looks very promising. We had the Schlosser Water Treatment Plant Project. All, all the bond documents are signed. We're, we're ready to go. So it'll be the fall of this year. We're still waiting on the Schlosser reliability study and AMP update. Drager Water State Revolving Fund, we did get a score back on that. And that actually is for the million dollar, the concrete standpipe replacement. That would put a million gallon elevated tank actually at the DPW garage, a booster station that'll go right behind the complex, the fire, the fire and police complex. This will actually improve the reliability of our system. That standpipe should have probably been replaced five or six years ago, or if not longer. The water service replacement program, we're continuing onto that. That's the mandate through the Safe Water Drinking Act. That's the lead service replacement. Kids Corner Phase Three, I'm calling it. That's where City Council approved the allegations of the $119,637 from the city's American Rescue Plan Act. And that should be starting actually in the fall. More dates to follow when I get that pinned down. So I just wanted to put out actually also, if anybody wants to receive text alerts on power outages, watering breaks, road closures, please text the letters SHDPW to the number 888-777. City Council have any questions on this project or anything else I can help them with?
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment that the solar project that Bill was talking about, we did discuss that at the Board of Public Utilities meeting. And that grant that, I'm glad to hear that we're getting that grant. That's from the Inflation Reduction Act. And that would be really good if we can get that. And the end result is, we, if all this goes through, we can see lower rates for our electricity customers, which is a good thing, with very little upfront cost to the city. Bill, I, I did have a question on the, on the status of the Kids' Corner Phase Three. Do we have any timeline as far as when that might start or?
Not yet. I'm going to have to reach out to Compton's and see if I can get a firm date. So.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing. The cost of service study for electrical, I know we just approved costs for a lot of our electrical workers. Does, does the rate study factor that in? Or do we need to see if that needs to be factored in with the rate study?
We do factor that in. We factor in an increase projecting actually over time.
Okay.
It's, you know, we, we factor in, I want to say probably, I want to say 3%, we factor in. But we also have other variables too, like for example, what we purchase power might be higher one. And so when this goes back and comes back to cost of service study, then I would suggest actually City Council has had this updated, the same thing what we do every year. Once UFS has this plan and set, updating it is very, it's not as, not as costly. And it just goes to show that where your rates are set and actually, then you can see projection wise better. So, but to answer your question, they do, they do submit that in there, but maybe not to the three and a half percent.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for pursuing the solar project. I think it's really exciting. And then just say, as a mom, the iPad without a case on it scares me.
I'm keeping it real tight here right now.
It makes me so nervous.
I know. I just spoke to that a little bit.
That's awesome. I'll, I'll just say thanks. Town looked great. Very busy weekend, lots of people in town, and you, it was well managed. So good work. So, very good. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Now, we're at that time of the meeting. It's public comment, where citizens in the audience have heard on items not on the agenda. So if you've got a question or comment, or just want to talk about the nice park we're in, come on up, state your name, address. You'll have up to five minutes. This is a very nice view, by the way. Just saying, this is quite nice, my view here. Pretty nice.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard.
Evening, David.
I just wanted to comment that I have heard from many people since we've moved here that the city's website could definitely use improvement. So I'm not sure who's in charge of that or how it works. But I think that it would be worthwhile to get residents' input on what they like and don't like about the website. Because I've heard very little, very few good comments about the website and a lot of frustration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for comments. Was there anybody else? I want...
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I have a few. So for the status of the farmer's market, there was supposed to be a survey that was created. And in light of the comments at the more recent past City Council meeting, I certainly hope that the elected officials will be reviewing that survey that's going out. I just was wondering if there's something that the City Council can do to urge resolution of the permanent fire pit, fireplaces and barbecue issue. It was first brought to your attention on May 2, 2022, City Council meeting, was then sent to Planning Commission. I mean, and this ordinance had only been passed in September 2021. And the first time the PC heard about it was July 2022. And per the August 2023 Agenda Packet, it was there. And now we're almost two years after the effective date of that ordinance. And I appreciate, everybody's busy. I appreciate that Planning Commission is a tier position. However, the Planning Commission had, had only met three times, December 1, January 5, the January 26 meeting was canceled, and July 6. There was no meeting from January to July. That hiatus really delayed this, caused a whole nother summer to go by, at the detriment of the residents. And one particular person specifically, and you know that. And if you look at the minutes from the August meeting, the chairman specifically requested a public hearing at the next Planning Commission meeting, which is Thursday. If you look at the agenda, it is not on there. So would you please direct staff to get this matter to you as soon as possible and explain why it's taking so long? Explain why there was a hiatus. The residents deserve accountability. Another item is compliance with the zoning ordinance. So there's been a lot of questions by residents of the larger homes going up. And in 2015, when height was modified, there was also a change added to single-family residential structures with more than three bedrooms requiring an engineer review. And at this point in time, there are no policies and procedures for the engineer review. There is no written engineer review for these larger homes, and these larger homes are going up. And I think that this needs to be resolved because the zoning ordinance requires it. There's no written record to ensure it occurs. And this is something the residents have raised as a concern. And last but not least, resident neighborly. So many residents continue to get letters from city staff with regard to trash cans left out. I would encourage residents to be neighborly to each other. If you have a resident who has odd work hours, and especially residents who are older and may have mobility issues, reach out to them, offer to help bring up the curb. And it would save staff so much time not having to go around taking photos and sending letters and upsetting residents, and then asking for excuses or exceptions. If the City Council is not willing to amend the ordinance to make it more friendly to residents, I encourage residents to take it upon ourselves and help our neighbors so that staff don't have to use up their precious time enforcing a trash can ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else?
Annie Brown, 114 Michigan Avenue, and I'm running for mayor of South Haven. We stand on sacred ground. This is named after Stanley Johnson, but people gathered here long before he did. The Potawatomi's met here. And they called this area Nikonong, which means beautiful sunsets. We are so blessed in our community to be able to watch our beautiful sunsets. Today, on the East Coast, this Tuesday after Labor Day is known as Tumbleweed Tuesday, because all the tourists clear out. I want to thank the Visitors Bureau and Jen for all the work they do to invite people and make our city welcoming. The thousands of people who came to South Haven this summer, from every state in the union, parts of Canada, and probably all around the world, have left after three months of reminding us that our sunsets are worth the drive and worth the money. For me, a year-round resident, September 1 is like New Year's Day. It's a time to make resolutions that I promise to uphold. It's a day for us to reflect on our past season. First, I want to thank every member of our city staff. They are our unsung heroes. Like the stage crew who works backstage at Listiak, our city employees are the invisible people who have worked tirelessly and quietly all summer long, all year round, and made our town run like a well-oiled beach cleaning machine. As we write down our new season resolutions, let us remember to thank more and grant less. If neighbors are important to you, this is the perfect time of year to prove it. Prove it with your words and deeds. In a city that has felt fragmented and at times divided, it is imperative that we recognize the importance of unity and collaboration within our community. Because when we work together, we can achieve incredible things. Before cold weather comes, I encourage you to cheer at a high school volleyball game. Introduce yourself to a new neighbor and watch at least one more sunset. And think about who South Haven is and where you fit in. As the next mayor of South Haven, I will be pushing an agenda, an agenda of kindness, unity and community, diversity, and working together to make our town even stronger. I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
Thanks for commenting. Was there anybody else? Good evening, Bishop.
Evening. Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. Excuse my attire.
Looks good.
Just a quick comment, a quick comment. I want kudos to the council for quickly recognizing the need for an increase to recreation, supporting Brian and his crew. I believe that's how it should work. We recognize a need, and we move swiftly on it. But I just want to share with you quickly what I've heard in regards to South Haven. I realize and I echo what Brian said about it. It's sad when we see kids that leave our school district to play another school district because of the sports program. That is a sad benediction. But what I heard from a lot of former athletes, I used to be one, it might not look like it. Back in the day, I did play a little sports here. When our school had to leave the Wolverine Conference and play in other programs, lower district levels, a lot of former athletes thought that was very sad, that we had, we were forced to leave the Wolverine Conference and play teams that we wouldn't even scrimmage back in the day. So I hear that a lot. But there are other reasons that, you know, behind that. And one is because the school don't have the numbers. They just don't have the numbers. The kids aren't there. And the ones that are there, they're leading for other programs. So we do need support with the recreation. But kids aren't there. And one reason is because of homes. So you want to tie it to economic, economic development. We got to get, really start pushing for a We got to get, really start pushing for workplace housing in South Haven. That is one of the big issues too, causing kids, you know, South Haven School not have the numbers because there's nowhere to stay. So that ties right into it too. I think Mr. Sett mentioned something about the feeder program. Well, back in the day, we didn't have a feeder program. We didn't have rocket programs that the kids have now. We didn't have the feeder program. But what we did have was a strong park recreational program. And our people like the late Ms. Mosley, that worked the parks, they were the ones that taught us sports back in the day. The first time I got introduced to softball, softball became, I got, you know, a tuck on softball, went in to start playing baseball, played baseball for the South Haven Rams team. But I'm saying those park programs, we didn't have the feeder programs, we had strong park programs, and that's where kids were introduced to sports. They didn't have the feeder programs. So we have to really take a look at putting money back into the parks as well. Because for some kids, that's the first introduction to sports. And so I just wanted to say that as well. So workforce, workforce housing, workforce housing, workforce housing, and putting money back into park recreation. I don't know, we had a, we had a name for it before they would fund money into it.
Correct?
Direct, direct program. That was a, they, they, that was very strong back in the day. And maybe we can revisit that as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Was there anybody else? All come up. Good evening.
Good evening. Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. I wanted to speak for a minute about the lack of transparency regarding the financial situation for the community. Over the course of the past year, there's been limited financial information presented to you. The monthly financial report is either inaccurate, mislabeled, or grossly incomplete. As a CFO with multiple professional certifications in a variety of fields, I can't make heads or tails of the information that is provided. And I wonder how you, gentlemen and ladies, who aren't necessarily financial people, you may be strong business people, you're very intelligent about what you do, but how can you understand where we are? Do we have a big surplus? Are we on the precipice of bankruptcy based on the poor information that's presented to you? A single page that's attached to the report that doesn't have any headers that says this is for the month, or this is for the quarter, or this is for the year-to-date? There is no longer a column for better or worse than budget because apparently the math was too complicated, and so they stopped providing that information in terms of better or worse than budget. You just passed an appropriation measure here to say we're going to commit to spending additional money. That's great. The question was, is there room in the budget? The casual answer was, of course there is, we'll find a way to make it work. Well, maybe there's something more specific to say, we've got $20,000 extra in this variance for such and such. Do we know where that money is coming from? And I will take you back a year, when there was $100,000 that was appropriated towards Kitty Park for some additional construction there. And the decision then was to say, let's not do the women's restroom at the Public Works because we can put that on hold. So the city chose not to give women equal facilities to men. A year later, that has still not been rectified, and there is no specific plan to resolve it. So I challenge you, what's your confidence in the decision that you just made to say, we're going to spend additional monies here within this year or going forward, when you don't have any data in front of you? You need to hold city staff accountable for clear, concise financial information that shows where you are for the month and the year-to-date against each of the budgets separately. And that may be a 25-page appendix that goes on the monthly report. But you deserve it so that you can know quickly where are we at? And if there's extra money, do we put it aside for future or lower taxes? Or if we're going to have a problem, what are we going to do about it? But I challenge you to stand up and say, you know what the situation is today. I'm sure none of you can do that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Was there anybody else? See, none. All right, Kate, you're up. Trying to follow up with you real quick. I don't know. We're right with that facilities issue?
I'm sorry? Um, I do know that Bill was getting, getting quotes, and I'm not sure where we are with that, but I will follow up with him.
It was still in the works. All right, see, oh, Bill's moving. But why don't you go ahead, maybe he wants to comment, we can, I know it was still, it wasn't Shell, but go ahead, you want to, you want to wait for him first?
I'll wait for him.
Welcome back. Any mosquitoes back there?
Oh, it's fierce. I, I do have actually a report, I'm preparing for city council, and my apologies to Kate, I haven't had time to prepare it yet, but I do have the information. I actually had Fishback, Thompson, Carr and Huber do an analysis on, originally we had one consultant that gave us a price of this exit would cost. This was actually before COVID, so I wanted to know what exactly is this going to cost us? They did come back and it's over, it's close to $400,000. So I will circle back to city council, I do have the report, but I'll be recommending to city council, we don't proceed with this based on what we budgeted this year. We only budgeted 120, we're not prepared actually. The 400,000 would actually deplete our whole general fund capital improvement project list.
Okay.
But that's what I'll be presenting to city council next meeting.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, Kate, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, I think Jeff brought up the fact that because we had the holiday, be aware that your pickup and your recycling has been moved one day over. So if you are picked up on Monday, your trash day will be Tuesday. And I, and if you're Tuesday, it'll be Wednesday, and of course, Wednesday to Thursday. Because there were so many people who kind of got thrown off by the holiday, there will not be letters going out. We'll just do a better job next time for the holiday pickup. We do have the holiday schedule, and we also do have the yearly schedule for your recycling and your trash pickup flyers. We can get those posted on our website. I did also want to remind council that our next meeting on September 18th at 5:00 PM, we have our DEI workshop where we'll be covering the equity assessment that was done by IPS. So that'll be 5:00 PM, city council chambers at, on 9/18. Also, just, I'm sorry, released today on the city's website, as well as Nixle, the westbound lane of Ailworth and the 800 block will be closed tomorrow while contractors repair a failed storm sewer line. So that has been released both on Nixle and on the website. So if you know anybody heading westbound on Ailworth, they will see a road closure. And then lastly, I did want to give a big shout out and a massive thank you to the city's IT department who set up this entire meeting in the park. This was something that council wanted to see back as our, as our annual meetings in the park. This takes a lot of setup, as you can see with all these wires and cameras and things that we do to not only stream this on our online platform, but also on Channel 21, this takes a lot of work. Without Phil and Jared's help, we couldn't do all this. So again, they do, they do wonderful work, and I wanted to acknowledge them and their work today. And then one other thing is when we did, and I think George's kind of goes to your, your question, is when we, when we did the motion for the $2 increase per capita for Chara, I'm not sure if that increase made it into the motion and when the dispersments would be. Is it possible to redo that motion or at least clarify that motion to make sure that we have that for the record?
Absolutely. Uh, I thought.
So the motion probably should be?
Motion was to, let's see, well, to increase the annual funding. Oh, I, do you want to hear an increase?
Yep, to $4 an hour, starting January 1, but a $2 increase for the remainder of this year.
So the motion would be to increase the Chara contribution from 2 to 4 per capita?
Correct.
I make a motion to increase the annual funding to the Chara Recreation Authority from $2 to $4, starting January 1.
Right, per capita, and then increase, and adding a dispersment for the rest of this year.
And adding a dispersment for the rest of this year.
Second. All right, we got a motion second. Everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep.
Just kind of clarify. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Clarified, done. Ms. Kate, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Questions for Kate? What do you got?
Kate, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mosley brought up trash cans as well, and you just kind of reminded us that they're going to be running behind, so don't worry, and don't worry about letters. But she brought up people with mobility issues, and I thought I had a conversation with Griffin that if you have mobility issues, you can, do you let Bestway know or the city, and they will have people that can move the cans for you?
Yeah, I'll have to check and see. I do know that Bestway doesn't move cans back as much as Navy Reliable did, but I thought there was some workaround, and I'll have to get back with you on that and find out.
I thought there was something out there, so we'll, we'll get back on that. Okay? That was it?
Thank you.
I have a question. The 800 block of Ailworth?
Yes.
I don't know where that is. Is that by the school, though?
You know, I, I know there was a map that went out with, with what's been posted on the city's website.
I was just wondering if it's going to disrupt morning drop offs at Lincoln or something?
High School's 500, Elkenberg.
Yeah, but a lot of people wrap around to drop off at Lincoln.
Yeah, that's right, Lincoln might be.
It's near Lundie Lane. It's near Lundie Lane, so it's between Bailey and Village Market Express.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And cones over there and stuff, so.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? If not, city council comments. I'll start at my right. Joe?
Um, I hope Bill and the city can follow up with solar power. I think it would be great. I loved hearing the comments that George said, I think it's something good for the environment and good for our pocketbooks. I'm trying to be careful in saying this. I too, Mr. Tuttle, am frustrated with the financial reports. I've looked at them, and I had my own business for 25 years, and I wouldn't accept the reports that we use. I think they should be simple, concise, and easy enough for everyone sitting up here to read it at a glance, and it should be a good summary page. So I'm hoping, Kate, we can get something done about that, if not in the near future. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay, George?
Thanks again for city staff for setting up this meeting here. It was a very nice venue. I thought it worked out really good. And thank you for everyone that came today and gave us your comments. Much appreciated.
Very much. Wendy?
Yep, thank you all for your comments, and it was great to be out in the open air, even with the spiders crawling around on the table.
I almost got in trouble, so I was going to smoosh one, I was going to save her, and she was like, don't kill the spider!
Yes, thank you for not killing the spider. That's all. Thank you.
Good.
My comments are the same. Thanks for all the people that came out commented, and thanks to the IT department and the city staff. A lot of people were excited about coming out to the park, but then the heat scared me away. It wasn't that bad. I didn't think it was that bad.
It's nice out here.
Quite nice up here. Those are my comments.
All right.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment. How's the students?
Great.
To my two teachers?
Wonderful.
Good?
Yeah.
All right, school is good, the buses are running. Drive slow in the school zones, please. I'll just say again, IT, Jared and Phil, thank you, you two are amazing, like, good job, guys. We appreciate you. Thank you for allowing us to gather in places other than City Hall. This is much prettier than City Hall. Sorry. No baby blue here. What did I got here? My lights failing me here. Um, I guess I'll just say, I would be curious, Kate, if we could spend a few minutes, maybe we could bring the issue of a recreational millage to have the discussion with this group to see if we're interested in throwing it on a future ballot. It's on one of our goals, talked about it for a long time. I think all of us would like to talk about the concept of a quarter mill. I don't think we're talking about doing anything out of the ordinary compared to what other communities are doing. I think it's a nice time to have that discussion, and I would like, you know, I think we have the framework to make that happen, so let's spend some time talking about that at the next meeting. Oh, you're so kind. Thank you. Anything else down there? No. Other than that, just nice to see everybody out in the park. Again, great parks, get out and enjoy more. And on that note, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.